Questions for President and then they'll move forward. But first, we'll do all the swearing ends. And our Mayor-elect Keith Sidnor, if you'll come up front. You want to take it from here?
Yep. And then if we could have my, I mean Clerk of the Circuit Court.
Sarah's gonna hold the mic for you.
My name is Mahassen Al-Amin.
Mom, you're gonna come on up. I don't want to not give them. So you're gonna see him on the other side of him. There you go. And then you're gonna see him in here, Mom. Okay, just one second. And then you just come in here. I have the Bible. All right, so you're gonna hold the Bible. And you're gonna put your right hand. Raise your left hand on the bed, but raise your hand. There you go. Do you want to swear or affirm?
Affirm.
Okay. There we go. I.
I, Keith Sidnor.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Mayor for the city of Laurel.
Mayor of the city of Laurel.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the charter of this city.
And the charter of this city.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You know, I gotta prepare a speech though, for some reason, I feel like I should just freestyle it. Because, uh, yeah. But good evening, everybody. Wow, this is so real. But first, I want to acknowledge some dignitaries we have in the room, first of all. That's a customer order, but take a point of personal privilege first. Since this is a very historical moment, I'm into a lot of history. And a part of the history that I grew up on in the Navy is a griot storytelling. In African tradition, my mother's 81 years old. If anyone here 81. If anyone here is 81 or older, raise your hand. 81 or older, okay. So, uh. In the tradition, we like have permission to speak. I have permission to speak, sir? Just nod your head. Thank you. Since this is a historical moment, I just wanted to put that in an atmosphere. I want to acknowledge State's Attorney, Isha Brady-Boy from Prince George County. State's Attorney has been very supportive for the city of Laurel. She attended our Black History programs, our June 10th programs. So anytime we call State's Attorney, she's always come available for us. So she's a prosecutor for this whole county, but she really comes to help us out. And thank you so much for attending this ceremony, State Attorney. Any other elected officials, please stand up. Former Laurel officials, all of you stand up, raise your hand. I don't, I acknowledge you guys. So everybody, acknowledge. We got, I see we got mayors from other counties and cities here as well. So thank you all for coming out and supporting me as well. I really appreciate that. Prince George County Municipal Government Association. I see Senator Alonso Washington from the Maryland State Assembly out here as well. So once again, give a hand for all elected officials. I gotta send a special thank you to Commissioner, ANC Commissioner from Washington DC, Salim Adolfo. And where Jonathan at? Jonathan Madlock, you know, former mayor of District Heights, former council member of Prince George County Council. Quick story, I'm not gonna be long. I know you guys want to get through this thing. But Salim Adolfo and Jonathan Madlock, we all was in Washington DC and Southeast doing grassroots organization. None of us from DC, but we got here for government jobs. We all united in these organizations and working with undeserved net worths in Washington DC. And so that's how we got into this politics. And Jonathan Madlock led the way. He was the first one from our grassroots organization to run for councilman from District Heights. He won, and I came out here in Laurel, living in Laurel the past 20 years, and I won. Then Salim Adolfo, right now he's running for Southeast Councilmember. So just a partnership or friendship, us working together during the grassroots organization, during the work of the people, serving the people, regardless of where we live. So I'm glad they're here. And I didn't get here by myself. Had a lot of people help me. You know, my campaign manager, Darrell Simpson. You know. Darrell's very sharp, you know, very sharp young man from Washington DC. Just we met, we were mutual friends, and Darrell needed a job. So he wanted to help award to councilmember, so award to candidate. So we won, you know, three terms as City Councilmember, and now we're here today. So thank you, Darrell, for your leadership, your guidance as well. This young lady, I'm about to call her name, she never wanted anybody to recognize her though, but I've been knowing her since 2004. Tawana Sharad, thank you for all your leadership and your guidance as well. Like I say, we, uh. You don't get it by yourself, all my family from PSA, the Pre-Trial Service Agency, they're here. You know, I'm gonna call everybody names off because I'm gonna forget some people's names. I'm gonna be mad at me though, but all my volunteers and people helped me knock on doors, pass out flyers. Please stand up as well, from all the way from 2017 to this day. Stand up. They don't be recognized, they don't, they don't want to stand up. Anyway, they don't want to stand up, but I didn't, I didn't get here by myself. I got my lieutenant over there, John Singington, as well. But basically, like I say, we already know the platform, I'm not gonna go over that. This is more just thanking the people. Since this is a more significant history event here, me being the first African-American mayor, but there also was the first African-American City Councilmember, Honorable Reginald Parks. Is he here today? We asked him, well, we didn't get in touch with him though. But Reginald Parks was the first City Councilmember, African-American City Council to be elected in the city of Laurel. And I'm gonna give my facts straight, so I took some notes, so I don't want to misquote anything. So give me one second. Yeah, from 1992 to 1994, the Honorable Reginald Parks was a City Councilperson. And make it so significant that this building we in here right now, Mayor Robinson. Mayor Robinson was the mayor at the time, he recruited Reginald Parks to become on the City Council. So that's how Reginald Parks came on, it's a very diverse city. So I want to acknowledge the Honorable Fred Smalls, you hear Fred? Right here? Okay, well, Mr. Fred Smalls was the second councilmember African-American to be elected to the City Council. And Mr. Smalls elected in 2002 and served in 2019. Showed me a lot of leadership when I came on the council in 2017. So I looked at Mr. Smalls to give me a lot of guidance and everything. But this one lady right here is very special to me and my heart. Is Honorable Councilmember Valerie Nicholas here? Uh, she's not here? Well, like I said, we, since we talking about history, it's very significant we bring these names up. Valerie Nicholas was the first African-American female to be elected on the Laurel City Council. You know, she was elected in 2011, all the way to 2021. And what's also significant about Ms. Valerie Nicholas is she was the first African-American female to serve as a council president. So that's very significant as well. And the first time we had a majority African-American council was in 2017. Honorable Fred Smalls, Honorable Valerie Nicholas, and myself, Keith Sidnor, you know, third person, right? So yeah, that's the first time we had a majority African-American council in 2017. And we still making history, right? The first time we had three African-American males to serve on the City Council was in 2021. There was Councilman Martin Mitchell, Councilman Brenton Smith, and myself. Still making significant history. And tonight, we're gonna make some more history because this is the first time we had two African-American females serving on the council at the same time. And they'll be sworn in tonight. That's Councilmember-elect Christine Johnson and Councilmember-elect Kyler Fox. So I think it's very important to mention those, to give that brief history of Laurel, since we talking about Laurel was incorporated in 1870. And me being the first African-American male to serve as a mayor. But I wanted also pay forward to those individuals who laid the foundation down for me. Because I wouldn't be here today without the foundation people came before us. And it's very important for us not to forget that. No one gets anywhere by themselves. And everybody helped me. And I want to most importantly thank the people of the city of Laurel, who entrusted me with their vote of confidence, vote for me to be their executive officer of this city. I told you, I'm not gonna let you down. I'm gonna work very hard for you. If I don't know anything, I'm gonna tell you I don't know anything. You know what I'm saying? But we gonna look it up. But most importantly, I can't forget about the men and women that served this city. You know, I got to this position in Laurel and things I done on the council, it wasn't behind these men and women that you see to the left of me. These are all the people who's gonna keep me straight. Asked them all to stay on board, to help me out. So they all agreed, and I thank them. You know, I'm gonna need your help, like I say. So I'll be calling you all the time. I'm not gonna micromanage you though, but you guys gonna, you know, I've been working with them for the past six years. That's why I have confidence in them, that they can do their job. And they trusted me, you know, and anything I needed from the city, they was there. And that's how it's gonna be for the other councilmembers. So when you guys get elected tonight, my staff is gonna take care of you, just like they took care of me when I was a councilmember. So don't be afraid to call upon them, you know. But I'll just tell you a few things about how I'm gonna administrate this city. And my administration is gonna be open and transparent to your citizens. You know, we're gonna put this community first. We got open door policy. Anytime you want to talk to me, that's not a problem. I work for you. I serve at the will of the citizens of this city. You are my direct supervisor. So just all you gotta do is make an appointment and talk to our staff, and we'll get the thing covered. You might not like the answers every time you give us, you know, might not like what you say all the time, or you might like what we say all the time. But we gonna have a conversation, we gonna communicate. So the things we want to do, the youth is very important to me. As you know, my background's a law enforcement officer. Spent 22 years working in federal law enforcement, seven years as a federal correction officer, 15 years as a federal pre-trial service officer. And we know that's the intake in crime, but we as an adults gotta be responsible for juveniles. We can't blame the juvenile, and say, you know, we are responsible for that. Under my administration, we gonna see to that. We got a lot of nonprofit organizations in here that want to do the work with the kids. And my office will stand the hand if you need that. So don't be ashamed to call, come here and say, help us out. We're here to help these kids. That's the first thing we're gonna do. We're gonna increase business inside this city. We're gonna get businesses in the Senate to come inside the city of Laurel, open business Laurel, move to Laurel. Now, we're gonna get people in the Senate buy a home inside the city of Laurel. We have a plan for everybody. So I'm looking forward to the next four years, serving as your mayor and your leader. And once again, please hold me accountable because I work directly for you. So thank you so much for your time and attention. And let's get it, the next five councilors about to get sworn in tonight. Y'all ready? All right, thank y'all, I really appreciate it.
This is still on. I do Councilman DeWalt. I do Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Carl DeWalt. Raise your right hand. All right. So, uh, I, say your name.
I, Carl W. DeWalt.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Swear.
Or sign. Swear.
Okay. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution of laws.
And support the Constitution of law.
Thereof.
Thereof.
That I support charter.
That I support the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinances.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
Policies of the city of Laurel.
That I will provide.
That I will provide.
Accurate.
Accurate.
And fair representation.
And fair representation.
Of the city decisions.
Of the city's decisions.
To the community.
To the community.
In a manner that will not reflect.
In a mind that won't reflect.
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable.
Upon the city.
On the city.
Its staff.
Staff.
And the Laurel community.
And the Laurel community.
As a whole.
The whole.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skills.
The best of my skills.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of the City Council.
Execute the office of the City Council.
For the city of Laurel.
For the city of Laurel.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Maryland Constitution of Law.
And the Maryland Constitution of Law.
And the charter ordinance.
And the charter ordinance.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember James Cole. Raise your right hand, please. I, say your name.
I, James Cole.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution of laws.
And support the Constitution of laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
That I support the charter.
That I support the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
And the policies of the city of Laurel.
That I will provide accurate.
That I will provide accurate.
And fair representation.
And fair representation.
Of the city decisions.
Of the city's decisions.
To the community.
To the community.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
To the community, upon the city.
To the community or upon the city.
Its staff.
Its staff.
The Laurel community.
The Laurel community.
As a whole.
As a whole.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skills and judgment.
To the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Without partiality.
Without partiality.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of the City Council.
Execute the office of the City Council.
For the city of Laurel.
For the city of Laurel.
According to the United States Constitution.
According to the United States Constitution.
And the Maryland Constitution.
And the Maryland Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
And the charter and ordinance.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
Congratulations, sir. Raise your right hand and say your name.
I.
I, Kyla Clark.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And law thereof.
And law thereof.
That I will support the charter.
That I will support the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
That I will provide accurate.
That I will provide accurate.
And fair representation.
And fair representation.
Of the city decisions.
Of the city decisions.
To the community.
To the community.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
Upon the city.
Upon the city.
Its staff.
Its staff.
The Laurel community as a whole.
The Laurel community as a whole.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will, to the best of my skills and judgment.
That I will, to the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of the City Council.
Execute the office of the City Council.
For the city of Laurel.
For the city of Laurel.
According to the United States Constitution.
According to the United States Constitution.
The Maryland Constitution of Laws.
The Maryland Constitution of Laws.
And the charter.
And the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Jeffrey Mills. Raise your right hand, sir. Say your name.
I, Jeffrey Mills.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And law thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will support the charter.
That I will support the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
Policy of the city of Laurel.
That I will provide accurate.
That I will provide accurate.
And fair representation.
And fair representation.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
To the community.
To the community.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
In a manner that will not reflect unfavorably.
Upon the city.
Upon the city.
Its staff.
Its staff.
The Laurel community.
Laurel community.
As a whole.
As a whole.
I further affirm.
I further affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
To the best of my skills and judgment.
The best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office of the City Council.
Execute the office of the City Council.
For the city of Laurel.
For the city of Laurel.
According to the United States Constitution.
According to the United States Constitution.
The Maryland Constitution of Laws.
Maryland Constitution of Laws.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinance.
And the ordinance.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Ready? It's Christine Johnson-elect. What do you have?
I don't know.
I ain't got been no single file line. Y'all was in the military, I can push that. All right, raise your right hand. Read after me. I.
I, Christine Johnson.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution of the laws.
And support the Constitution of the laws.
Thereof.
Thereof. Thereof.
That I support the charter.
That I support the charter.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
The policy of the city of Laurel.
That I will provide accurate.
That I will provide accurate.
And fair representation.
And fair representation.
Of the city decisions.
Of the city's decisions.
To the community.
To the community.
In a manner.
In a manner.
That will not reflect unfavorably.
That will not reflect unfavorably.
Upon the city.
Upon the city.
Its staff.
Staff.
The Laurel community.
The Laurel community.
As a whole.
As a whole.
I affirm.
I affirm.
That I will to the best of my skills and judgment.
That I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently.
Diligently.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of the city council.
Execute the office of the city council.
For the city of Laurel.
For the city of Laurel.
According to the United States Constitution.
According to the United States Constitution.
And the Maryland Constitution laws.
And the Maryland Constitution laws.
And the Charter of the Ordinance.
And the Charter and the Ordinance.
Of the city of Laurel.
Of the city of Laurel.
Congratulations, ma'am. Do I sign first or you?
Yeah, you should sign.
I sign first. They give you a copy, yeah. Okay. Congratulations, again. Okay. They signed a 10-year contract. Councilmember Coles.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Clark. Councilman Mills. Madam Clerk. Waiting on instructions. Still in charge until, uh...
Uh, we have one more presentation.
Okay. Yes, high school. All right, so I guess we'll go have our seats and then they'll call us back up and we'll go to the dais when they're ready for us. I'm sorry.
Um, did you want, did mayor, did you want to have the gentleman do the Hyattville first or?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. You want to go ahead, sir?
Good evening. City of Hyattville, November 27, 2023. Mayor Keith Sidnor, City of Laurel. Mayor Sidnor, I offer this letter of congratulations to you on behalf of our city council and our entire community. We acknowledge the historic significance of this day and celebrate with you and the city of Laurel as you embark on this new chapter under your leadership. The people of Laurel have entrusted you with a great mantle and we, your neighbors to the south in Hyattville, look forward to partnering with you and your work to continue to move Laurel forward. Congratulations also to the new and returning council members as you also undertake your role in leading this awesome community. Mr. Mayor, we are indeed colleagues, but more than that, we are partners. Community service is a noble work and its success requires that our hands not only work together, but also join together. I welcome any opportunity to collaborate with you and your council in any effort that works to the betterment of our communities. Congratulations again and here is wishing you awesome success. Very respectfully, Robert S. Crossland, Mayor of Hyattville.
Mayor Sidnor. Mayor Sidnor, you might want to stay there for one second. We have, um, state's attorney, Bray Boy, would like to present you with something as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Before I make this presentation, I just wanted to take a point of privilege just to thank the outgoing mayor, Mayor Cregmo, who is a personal friend. Um, I want to thank you for believing in me and for supporting me. Uh, when I ran for state's attorney the very first time, um, you did not have to extend a hand of friendship and support to me, but you did. Um, and you continue to support really amazing people like the new mayor. And therefore you will always be a part, not only of the history, but the future of the city of Laurel. And I look forward to honoring you specifically at a separate time where I know you'll be receiving lots of honors, uh, because of your great work. But I just wanted to personally say thank you. I consider you a true friend. Thank you. And... Oh. Oh. Oh, oh, turn around here. Okay, here we go. Okay, so he wanted his, his citation where everyone could see it. Okay, got it, got it. No, I'm just, I'm just joking with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so from the office of the state's attorney. Uh, be it hereby known to all that the office of the state's attorney for Prince George's County, Maryland, offers sincerest congratulations to Mayor Keith Sidnor in recognition of being elected as the first black mayor of Laurel, Maryland. Whereas in 1870, Laurel was incorporated as a town by the Maryland General Assembly and at the turn of the century was cited as the most important city in Prince George's County. And whereas, in, uh, in common with the majority of Prince George's County, Laurel originally a slaveholding community that became then a segregated community and now 100 years later, a city that commemorates the freedom of all people with an annual Emancipation Day parade. And whereas, Mr. Sidnor, elected by a significant margin as the 35th mayor of Laurel, has served as a dynamic and motivated leader in the role of council member for War II. And whereas, Mayor Sidnor has great vision and has received praise and expressions of confidence from his predecessor, Cregmo. Now, therefore, I, um, am pleased to confer upon you this state's attorney congratulatory citations given under my hand and seal. Congratulations.
And one more. We have, uh, Mr. Sweet from Congressman Ivy's office as well.
I won't introduce myself again. I'll just kind of get straight to the point. Um, I have more citations here, uh, for the mayor as well as all of the council members. Um, so I'm just going to go ahead and read this. Uh, so be it known, the office of Congressman Glenn Ivy recognizes the accomplishments, uh, and contribution to the community of Keith Sidnor, James Cole, Carl DeWalt, Kyla Clark, Christie Johnson, I know I missed one. And Jeffrey Mills, um, on their election as, uh, mayor and council member for the city of Laurel presented on this 27th day of November, 2023. Congratulations. You can count here.
Christine, Christine.
I'm sorry, Christine. There you go.
All right, so the next, um, item that we have is, uh, nomination and election of the council president. Uh, so I'll open the floor for nominations.
Hi, I'd like to nominate James Cole as council president.
A second.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt.
No.
Councilman Mills.
No.
Council, uh, Mayor Sidnor.
I concur. I'll get a vote, but you know.
Motion carries. So we skipped one order of business, um, the pledge allegiance. So we'll give that to the council president.
All right, since we missed one agenda item, I'd like to call Nikita Lauten from CMIT Middle School, 8th grade, to come lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, before we, uh, start, come on up. This one is very special to me. Uh, you know, I substituted teacher in CMIT Middle School for almost two years and this young lady right here was, I shouldn't say it, but she's one of my favorite students, so. She even made a campaign video for me, so, uh, so I asked her to come tonight and be, uh, lead, lead us in the pledge of allegiance on our very first city council meeting because the kids are very important for us. And once we show the kids these examples we showing tonight, so, you ready? All right, let's do it. Lead us. Say it loud now.
Our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance. To the place of the same Lord. And to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good job.
Our next item of business for the evening is the selection of a president pro tem and I would like to appoint Kyla Clark as president pro tem of the city council. Our final agenda item of the evening is remarks of the mayor and city council. I would like to start with councilmember DeWalt.
Thank you all again for coming out and, uh, I look forward to serving the next two years as your city council member. Thank you very much.
Move right down the dais with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I did prepare some brief words, so just bear with me one moment. I'd just like to start by saying this win for the city council seat at large was a very humbling experience for me. And I'd just first like to thank God for this tremendous opportunity. I would like to thank my family who has shown support for another one of my bright ideas. I have these ideas and they just have to come alongside me, so I appreciate them for doing that. I always keep them on their toes with the different things I want to do throughout the community, but they stick right there beside me. I would like to thank my extended family and friends for their outpouring of love and support. So, you know, it's one thing to have an idea, you know, you work it out in your head, but it's another thing when people come alongside you and share your vision and your excitement and it's something magical when it comes to fruition. So I just want to thank them all for their support and their love. I would also like to thank the citizens and business owners of Laurel for all the support shown to me during this campaign and election. It means a lot to me and shows that the citizens of Laurel do have faith in me. They believe I will not only take the position seriously, but I will be able to get the work done with the administration. So some things I look forward to, I look forward to conversing and having open dialogue with the citizens and hearing what your needs are and what your concerns are. I also look forward to sharing my vision for the growth and development of our city. I look forward to working with the city staff. I used to work on the city before, so it's a little different capacity now, so I look forward to continue to working with you all. It's a different capacity, but the same cause, right? All for the love of Laurel. And I look forward to amicably working with this administration, learning new things, hearing different opinions on different matters. But most of all, I just look forward to serving. So here's to the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thank you, President. Cole. Thank you for everyone to coming out this evening. Uh, it's an honor. It's definitely going to be a pleasure working with this new council. It's, this is history across this whole table here. And, um, I'm glad that, uh, I'm, I'm...
and, um, I'm glad that, uh, I'm, I'm sitting right beside this gentleman, that I can, you know, I can be his left-hand man, you know? You know? But, and I definitely, uh, I'd like to thank God, most gracious, most merciful. I didn't intend to run this year. I was, uh, I was actually supporting Martin Mitchell for mayor, and, but, we, uh, once, once the race is over with, it's over with. It's time to do the work, and you'll have my 100% effort and, and, and abilities to do what needed to be done, because it's not about me, it's about we, and that's what we're going to do. And we're going to do it not just for you, but for, for all our constituents. So I thank everybody, my family and, and friends that came out this evening, and the constituents. Thank you very much for coming.
Councilwoman Clark.
Okay. I prepared a few, a few, um, words. Uh, I am deeply grateful to the residents of Laurel for your vote and entrusting me with the responsibility of serving on the common council. This victory is not just mine, but a shared achievement for our community. I extend heartfelt gratitude to my treasurer, Gordon Boyer, friends, my New York supporters, my volunteers, and my family, including my mother, father, and brother who are here with me today. Thank you for your unwavering support throughout this journey. Your sacrifice throughout my lifetime, love and encouragement have been my driving force. Moreover, I want to acknowledge the grace of God for guiding me through this campaign. With faith, determination, and your support, we will now embark on a journey to contribute positively to the growth and prosperity of Laurel. I look forward to ti- working tirelessly for our community, and I am honored to have the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Laurel, my family, and God bless us all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for your support to the nomination of president. I look forward to working with everyone up here. But I also want to thank all of the Laurel citizens that voted for me in the last election. All the support that you all gave me as I was door knocking, the support of my husband, the countless nights when you're out campaigning. You don't get to see a lot of your family, so everybody that's up here, thank you for the time that you're going to volunteer to put in for the residents of this city. Uh, with that, I would like to turn the floor over to our new mayor, Keith Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I grew up in Petersburg, Virginia, and I have five sisters and only boy. And this is one of the few times that all my sisters here together on a happy moment. My first cousins is here. So I want everybody from Petersburg, Colleen, Texas, Houston, Texas, please stand up, my family, please stand up, we recognize. Yeah, thank y'all. I come from a community in the African proverb, take a village to raise a child, and the village definitely poured into me, so, uh, we're going to continue this one for, like I said before, but I'm not going to keep repeating myself. I want to thank all the citizens of Laurel for voting for me. Like I say, you entrusted me for the next four years. I would not let you down. I'm going to give you my all, looking forward to working with the new council. Any questions you have, just please, please, let's talk about it, you know, before we air it out in the streets. Let's just, you know, because we have that, you know, that's what we do. We like to, we legislators and we executive officers, so we can talk about these things and work it out. Because we all serve, because we want to do the best interest of the city. We might not agree on everything, and that's great, because that's how we learn from one another. Disagreement is great, but we don't have to be hostile towards one another. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys, ladies and gentlemen, and we can do a great job. The city trusted us, and we're doing a great job. We've got a great city staff. We got former council members and former mayors inside the city who are still living here, who wants to help and want support. We have a wonderful volunteer team inside the city. We are a great community, and we're going to continue that great community. We are a very diverse community, and we're not going to mess it up. We're going to move this city forward. So thank you so much, and looking forward to the next four years working with the whole city of Laurel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and with no further business before the city council, this meeting of the first, uh, council meeting is now adjourned.